Thanks for those of you online. Looks like we have Rick Gleason online as well as, looks like Heather has called in, maybe on the phone, I see her name up there.
Heather from the Northern Lake Trust and Conservancy.
Oh terrific. Great. If that's you, awesome. Whoever it is, well welcome. Welcome to have you here. Let me just quickly kind of describe how the meeting will go. This is one of our study sessions. So primarily, the bulk of the meeting is going to be our guest Zane going through her report with a lot of Q and A. But we did want to just start out by announcing a few things about the network. And just let you know that we record these sessions and we post them on the Food and Farm Network website so that people can review them. What I'll do today when Zane is speaking is I'll actually share the slides that she has with the folks online so they'll be able to see what we're seeing on the screen. So it'll be clear to everybody and then that'll all be available later for people to see. Tricia, can you talk about the summit coming up?
Yeah. We have put together posters for the event and I'd love if people would take a look at them and disperse them around town, pass them each way.
Can you guys hear that okay online?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, thanks.
We will have, you know, similar setup to last year as far as the rapid fire updates. They're going to be probably two for each goal. And then we'll have essentially a presentation of this report that Bill will kind of show you our updates a little bit. And then there will be a timeframe for cocktails and networking similar to last year as well. We're working with Goodwill to provide the food, whether they will have their food truck or Inside Out is still up in the air right now. But then we'll also be screening Open Sesame, the story of seeds. And I've got a little preview of that if you guys are interested, maybe we'll include that in the notes.
So yeah, and the summit will be very much like last year's summit, except it'll even be shorter.
Okay.
So we're learning. It's taken us a while, but we're learning that shorter tends to be better and a little more collegial. So hopefully that'll work. I brought one draft copy of our Food and Farming Network Report to the Community. I'm holding that up for people to see there. This will be, it's something that we've asked a lot of you to contribute to. And at this point, we've got 50 contributors, which is pretty cool. And this is the first draft. There's about seven or eight other narratives that will be plugged into here as well as, if you see any yellow pieces, that means there's stuff we're expecting that we haven't gotten in yet, either a narrative or a photograph. And we've tried to really make sure that we have coverage from all points of our map as well as all points of our mission. So after reading this a few times, there were some gaps and holes and I reached out to try and get some specific content back from people. So hopefully, when you take a look at it, it'll give you, it'll get you excited a little bit. I think we're going to be able to use this to really drive our work over the next year or so. And we at Michigan Land Use Institute have taken on the role of pulling this together and producing it. At the last meeting, I made a very soft request. Basically, it was a suggestion that eventually I would come here to this meeting and ask you for money. And in the intervening weeks, some of you stepped up and just showed up with checks, which was pretty cool because I didn't really ask for money. So I want to thank Goodwill, who sent us a check for 300 bucks to help cover the costs of printing on this, as well as the folks from Eat and Be Good, who sent us a check as well. And Greenstone Farm Credit Services stepped up. But we're still looking to raise another $2,000 to help offset printing costs. So if there's any budget back in your organizations, if you can afford anything to help offset printing, because we really have no budget for this program, that would be really helpful. We're imagining to print 300 copies of this as a full color document and then the rest will be distributed online. We will distribute at least 150 on the day of the summit, that's pretty typical, and then be able to give everybody a stack of copies of these to distribute as you will. And then we'll also have a digital version of it. I think it's going to be a powerful document for the entire network to use. Please take a look at it. If you see any holes, you know, let me know. There's still a few days where I could get something in here. And there's still a few things, like I'm hoping to get something back from Jason Roundtree for his Grass Fed Beef Program. I'm waiting for a few other pieces and parts. There's something from the chamber has agreed, they're going to send us something on the importance of agriculture and economic development, which I think is really a critical piece. So if you take a quick look through it and you see there's gaps, let me know. We'll try and fill them up before we go to print on the thing. But I'm really excited about how this is going to turn out. Any comments on that? Scott, you guys did something really similar, which really was the incentive for doing this. I think you guys are still using that two years later.
Yes.
Pretty powerful, so appreciate that.
Building on it all the time.
Building on it, yeah, great. All right. How about just a quick set of introductions and I'll start online. Rick, do you want to say hello and tell us who you are?
Sure, thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rick Gleason. I'm the Regional Representative for the Michigan Farm Bureau in Northwestern Michigan. I work with six county farm bureaus over an eight county area from Mason County north to Lelandau, over to Kalkaska, and then down through Mesaki and Wexford. I help the county farm bureaus facilitate their programs, work with a number of different programs within that, specifically the promotion and education aspect of it, where we have volunteers going into classrooms and raising awareness of agriculture through the implementation of lesson plans. As a matter of fact, we partnered with the Conservation District, Grand Traverse Conservation District, with a grant to do a summer educational program for the youth up there. We are also active in the involvement and leadership of young farmers. We will, this weekend, have 360 young farmers from across the state up at the Grand Traverse Resort for their leadership conference. And there will be various tours going around on Friday in the area up there in Traverse City. So I'm happy to be a part of this. I'm very interested in working with our volunteers and our organization in branching out and working with other organizations for the advancement of agriculture in the area.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Everybody heard that more or less?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. It's really good to have you and the Farm Bureau involved. And thanks to Mark Coe for continuing to make that reach out, because I know that's something you've worked on, Mark. Heather, are you on the line out there? I see your microphone is on mute right now. If you're online, just say hello if you would. See, she's still on mute, so maybe she's just listening in. Well, I'll just quick go on. Bill Palladino with the Michigan Land Use Institute and Taste the Local Difference. If everybody just want to introduce themselves for Rick. Wendy?
I'm Wendy Willis. I'm with the MSU Product Center doing business counseling for those starting businesses in ag, food, or natural resources industries. And I also am part of MSU Extension's Community Food Systems Group.
My name is Dan Ariza and I'm a private individual, not attached to any organization currently, and relatively new to the area. And I'm just pursuing my interest in private network.
Rick?
Hi, I'm Tricia Phelps, a part of Taste the Local Difference and also part of this core group planning the summit. There's one thing I did forget to mention about that related to the artwork that you see on the poster. You guys are familiar with Lexicon Sustainability, we've been talking about here a lot this year. That top image is very similar to the type of artwork that they present, but this is actually one that Heather and I put together recently. And those definitions that we've been working on are going to be made into artwork like this. So there will be about 20 pieces from the Lexicon Sustainability that we're going to be posting up around the Inside Out Gallery. But we'll also have our additional five definitions, very similar to their design posted as well. And that'll be up for three weeks, so not just during the time of the summit.
Hi, Rick. I'm Mark Coe, Goodwill Food Services, part of your program.
Hey, Rick, thanks for joining us. I'm Brian Burdage. I'm the Farmland Program Manager for the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy.
Good morning, everyone. Bill asks you to use my radio voice all the time. Tom Efling from Michigan State University. I'm the community partner and celebration director here from Traverse City. And I'm also an affiliate associate with our MSU Center for Regional Food Systems on campus in East Lansing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diane Mall and I'm from Lytton. I work with the nutrition department there as the retail manager, managing the patient meals cafe, catering, anything food. And I'm back there right now at 9:00. This is our first meeting. I'll be getting to the mix where you're always thinking about what we can do manually to bring in local or different types of people there at large establishments in Lytton.
I'm Scott Smith from the Local Food Alliance of Northern Michigan, which focuses at the moment mostly on Emmett and Charlevoix County. We're not an organization per se, we're really a forum for bringing together folks who are interested in local food and farming activities in our region and looking for ways that we can organize efforts to promote those. In addition, I am a member of the board and chair of the Land Preservation Committee of the Northern Lake Trust and Conservancy. And so we have an interest in exploring farmland protection in our watershed. And so that is another reason for being pretty interested in today's session.
Great. Zane?
I'm Zane Schwager and I'm from the Lelandau Conservancy. And I'm going to be talking a little bit today about our farmland access work.
And we forgot one.
Hey, Rick. I'm Rob Serine. How you doing? MSU Extension and Chair of the Food and Farming Network. Came in late.
So with that, we'll just move on to the core of the program, which will be Zane. And just to remind everybody, this is a casual atmosphere. Zane will give her presentation and if, you know, if you want to accept questions along the way, please do. If you want to leave them to the end, that's really up to you. We'll record it for Rick online there. I'll make sure that I advance some slides for you so you can see what she's talking about. And otherwise, we'll record this and make it available to everybody offline. And Zane, I want you to introduce your project and take it away. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Thank you, Bill, for having me and everyone. I know Heather is on vacation, but thank you to Heather too for her work. And I'm going to talk about a grant that we've been working on over the past year. And we've been looking into new tools to help farmers get access to land. And...
Hey Larry. Larry just turned his...
Okay. I've given this presentation a couple times to our, the board of the Lelandau Conservancy and the staff and a couple other groups. I am particularly interested in your feedback because you are immersed in this field, more so than anyone else I've given this presentation to. So I really welcome your feedback. And I am going to ask that you hold your questions until they end, but then I'm going to, you know, welcome all your questions and give a lot of space for that. So if there is a clarifying question, of course, you can ask that. You can always interrupt me as well, so it's casual.
Zane, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt right away, but I just wanted to know if you would like me to provide some background about how we got to this grant.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Because you weren't there at that piece.
Yeah.
Just so everyone knows what, how we got to this work, Rotary Charities, some of you might remember this, had come to the conservancies and they had representatives from the, from some consulting group who were working with the area commissions on aging. And they were doing some studies about the needs in the rural communities that were identified. And one of the needs that arose that took them by surprise was a continued concern about what's going to happen to their farmland resources as everyone ages. And a lot of people who were retiring and didn't have heirs for their farmland, et cetera. So Rotary came to us and said, "We know that there's other things that are going on. What can we do in our region?" And offered up a planning grant, which ultimately, we ended up at the Lelandau Conservancy with a little advisory group of some of us in the room. So that's just a little background about how we got here, which I think is important because it shows that this issue has come to the attention of Rotary and actually was in part initiated by them to get this work done, so.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, so I'm going to start off by telling you a couple stories. Don Kees was a cherry farmer and he and his brother Bill farm about 250 acres in Lelandau County. And when Don was 23 years old, he decided that he wanted to start farming and he and his wife Jan started looking for land. This was in 1969. And at this time, he worked full-time for Consumers Energy. And he told me that he set aside a quarter of his paycheck for four years and with that, he bought his first 40 acres overlooking Grand Traverse Bay. And jump forward about four decades, we have a young farmer, 24 years old, looking to farm in the Grand Traverse region, Reed Johnson. When Reed started farming, buying land wasn't an option for him, so he started by renting. And he rented in three different locations for about six years. And eventually, he ended up on a beautiful 40 acre farm where he really established his business. He became very successful. But the farmers or the owners of the land, last winter, decided that they wanted to sell. And Reed, who is at this time about 30 years old, isn't particularly ready to buy the land, but felt essentially he needed to make a decision. He told me that moving all of his equipment seemed insurmountable. And so he looked into getting an FSA loan, a Farm Service Agency loan. And fortunately, because he had a strong business plan and was very successful, he qualified for the loan. Unfortunately, it can often take up to a year for those loans to be finalized, as many of you probably know. And he was very stressed for a period of time, worried about whether or not he'd be able to buy the farm because the owners were ready to sell. They were ready to put it on the market. Fortunately, all the stars aligned, the money came in, he bought his farm. It was a $550,000 farm, a 40 acre farm. And he's thrilled to finally be the owner of the land and have that security. I tell these two stories not because it's apples to apples. Every single farmer's story is completely unique. But I do think it illustrates how much more complex it is to buy farmland today than it was 40, 20 years ago. So with this in mind, we applied for this Rotary Charities grant that Brian mentioned because we all know of stories like this, young farmers looking for land. Finding and affording land is one of the most pervasive problems for young farmers. And so our goal was to bring leaders in farming and food from Northern Michigan together and determine how can we improve access to land for these farmers? What are the tools that we can use? And so we did four things. We wanted to determine the present and future need for affordable farmland. We wanted to build a case statement so that we could go to people like our boards, people that don't realize how essential this is. And then we wanted to research new and innovative farmland access programs across the country. What are people already doing in other places? And then meet with our partners and farmers and develop recommendations. So these are our partners. A lot of these people who sit around this table on a regular basis. And I just wanted to thank everyone because it was, it was really an honor for me to have everyone in the same room discussing this issue and all the different perspectives that were brought around that table. It was just, it was a real privilege to be a part of that group. So these are some of the farmers that we spoke with. And one of the things that we know we need to do is we know we need to talk to more farmers. And I know that we need to not be so Lelandau centric, but I take all the responsibility for that, being a Lelandau person. So we're going to be extending our reach as we move forward. So now that sort of answered that first point, which is why are we even, why did we decide to research farmer access to land? What brought us here? Susan Cotterelli, who many of you know, did a Michigan Farm Succession Study with Steve Miller from MSU. And Steve was nice enough to go back into the data from that study for us and pull out some figures specific to Northern Michigan. So there's a lot of text on this slide, I'm going to walk you through it. So what we know from that data is there are 695 farmers in Northern Michigan over the age of 65. And 26, about 26,000 acres of farmland is going to become available for sale or rent within the next 10 years. And 56 acres is going to become available for family bequest. So that's a total of about 83,000 acres that are going to be in the K Cams within the next 10 years. And the distinction between the 26,000 and the 56,000 numbers is that the 26,000 number is land that does not have a succession plan in place. So you can see, fortunately, a lot of land, farmers do say they have a succession plan in place, but the fact remains that there is going to be a tremendous shift in ownership of land over the next 10 years. Just to zoom into Lelandau County, so you can kind of see how the numbers are for a single county, these are the same category. So 166 farmers over the age of 65, about 6,000 are going to become available without a succession plan, 13,000 with a succession plan. So we're nearing 20,000 acres just in Lelandau County that are going to change hands within the next 10 years. So who will our new farmers be? Fortunately, we have strong numbers that show us an increase in beginning farmers in Northern Michigan. And all of you know this because this is what you do all the time. But just to have some stats to back it up, we talked to Jim Monroe at the Farm Service Agency and he showed great increase in their beginning farmer loans, which is really exciting. And Greenstone is also, also has an increase in beginning farmer loans. And I should go back to them and ask what their number, their final number was for 2014 because I spoke with them in the fall and they didn't have that final number yet. We also, on the distributor end, Cherry Capital Foods, they're reporting a huge increase. So not only are we having more farmers, we're also distributing more of their food. And we also know there's an incredible growth of the Young Farmer Local Foods Movement. Again, preaching to the choir here, you know this, but Paul Wagner from the Farm Bureau talked to me about how the Michigan Farm Bureau's Young Farmer Leadership Conference has grown significantly in recent years. And the Northwest Michigan Small Farm Conference has grown. And Wendy gave me those numbers. So we've got lots of evidence from different angles on our increase in farming, the beginning farmers in this area. So to tell a couple more stories, and just in terms of when we're thinking about farmer access to land, which farmers do we want to help? Who are we, who are we looking to help? And I want to emphasize that we want to make sure the tools that we implement are helpful to a lot, to a wide range of farmers. So Travis Brachi, who sometimes attends these meetings too, he works at Greenstone. He is a high density apple and cherry farmer. He bought his first 10 acres in 2010 and then he bought another 25 in 2012. So he has about 80 acres producing and another seven being prepared. And Travis would love to expand his farm, but land around him is very expensive. And it's, as he said, it's just hard, you never know when it's going to go for sale because it's all these inside deals. It's all the older farmers who have a friend, if they decide to sell it, it's going to be to someone that they know. And so for Travis, what would be really helpful is developing the relationships between the older farmers and the younger farmers. Because as he expressed, the older, the older farmers are, the farmers that they know and trust tend to be within their own age group. So we've been thinking a lot about how, what tools could help a farmer like Travis expand his farm? Because in order to be profitable, he needs to be working on more acres. Another story about Jenny Tutlas and John Lats. They have a CSA farm. They started farming in 1994 and they rented for seven years. At that point, their landowner decided to sell and they started looking for a place to buy. And this was in 2001 when they were looking for land. And they actually came to the Lelandau Conservancy at that time and said, "Will you help us? Will you enter into some kind of lease, a long-term lease model with us? Do you have, is there any way we can work together?" And when Jenny told me this story, she said, "You weren't ready for that yet." And so I like to think that 14 years later, we're, we're almost ready for that. We're, at least we're talking about it now. So now we're going to get into the meat of the program, which is the tools. What are the tools that we looked into? And where I started was I looked at these three reports, which gave me a great primer and what's out there right now. The first one is Farmland Conservation 2.0. That's a great report that's put out by the National Young Farmers Coalition. And that's, you can find that PDF online. All of these are available online. That's a great place to learn about what some of the most innovative land trusts are doing to help young farmers access land. The second one is the Hudson Valley Food Shed Conservation Plan. And that is a fascinating vision for the 11 county region of the Hudson Valley. And the report really asked the question, "How much farmland do we have? Which is the most important to conserve? And how much will it cost?" And the whole point of this report is to bring groups together so that they can have greater collaboration and they can bring in more funding and make sure that their farmland preservation work is at a much wider scale and more unified. And that report is the first of its kind and there's quite a lot of buzz about that. So that was really interesting in terms of thinking how we might do that in the Trevers region. The third report is a report on farmland investors. And this is a really interesting look. It's, this was put out by an organization called Land for Good. And they look critically at the different kinds of farmland investment groups and talk about, they specifically address the question of, are these farmland investment groups serving beginning farmers? And I won't tell you what they decide, I'll let you read it if you're interested, but it's really interesting and quite in-depth. So we're going to talk about six specific tools. And the first one is Farmer Land Owner Matching Program. So a lot of places around the country have good linking programs, Farm Links, they're often called. There's California Farm Link, for example. And I want to make a distinction between a linking program and a matching program. A linking program is generally completely reliant on a database, an online database for linking farmers and landowners. A matching program goes a little bit further in that there's actually a staff person that's personally making all the connections. Brian likes to call it like farmer landowner dating service. So it's like no blind dates with the matching service. All of the input from the landowners and the, those seeking land is put into the database manually. The person actually meets people and it's a much more personalized service. So a good example of this is the Columbia Land Conservancy in New York. They have a very successful farmer landowner matching program. It's maintained by a staff member named Marissa Cody. And she says that she, at any given time, she has about 200 landowners and farmers in her database and most of those, she is, she knows who they are in her head. She's spoken with them. She, she has a committee of local farmers that actually go and visit the land and suggest what it might be good for. Since 2009, there's been over 200 program participants and more than 30 successful matches. And their program has been so successful that they are now partnering with their neighboring land conservancy, Dutchess Land Conservancy, and providing the service for the neighboring county. So... So. I, I found this example particularly interesting, because it was started small, and now it's growing. And it reminded me a little bit of Farmability, how we started kind of small, and now it's growing. And now we're kind of wondering what's next. So. The next tool is a revolving loan fund. And the example of this that we looked into is the Delaware Young Farmers Program. And in this program, farmers between the age of 18 and 40 can apply for a 0% interest loan from the state. And then their land is preserved through the Delaware Agricultural Lands Preservation Program. And as this is Delaware, it's kind of a unique situation. I think there are two counties in Delaware, so it's a small state. But, and it's a young program, there were 10 farmers enrolled in the first two years. But we are particularly interested in this idea, because we wonder if we could create some kind of a revolving loan fund using private dollars and maybe some public dollars, and essentially offer young farmers a very low-interest loan in exchange for the development rights on their farm. So this is an idea that we are talking about and inspired by the Delaware program. The next tool is farmland investment groups. And as I, as I hinted at a little when I talked about the, this publication, most farmland investment companies do not focus on beginning farmers, because beginning farmers are considered a riskier investment than an established farmer. However, the Iroquois Valley Farms Company, which is a private farmer-investment company, they do have a Young Farmers Land Access Program. And it's, it's pretty new, but so far, they have some really great stories. They're leasing 12 farms to young farmers currently. They have land in a lot of different places in the Midwest. They have a lot in Wisconsin. A lot of organic valley farmers have linked up with Iroquois Valley Farms. Something that's unique about Iroquois Valley Farms is that they only invest in farmland that is organic or is transitioning to organic. So they have really high standards, and we know they're what you would consider a triple bottom line investment company or ethical investing. They have long-term land tenure as well as lease-to-purchase options, which makes their model very attractive to farmers. And they are really wanting to make sure that it's a, they are serving both the interests of the farmers and their investors. You can probably see that there's kind of an inherent conflict in there. How do you serve your investors and your farmers? And this, this publication addresses that, and it's an interesting question. And I continue to kind of wonder how that plays out. Chip Holblin and Craig Wesley, Craig came to one of our meetings, I think, here, last spring. They are interested in creating a northern Michigan farmland investment group. And they're just in the beginning stages of talking about it. But, so that's something that might be on the horizon. Okay, so the next tool is called an OPAV. And OPAV stands for Option to Purchase at Agricultural Value. So the OPAV was started in Vermont. The Vermont Land Trust, which has a lot of farmland conservation easements, started to see their farms with conservation easements, some of them sold to estate buyers. So they began to see some of their preserved farmland transitioning out of agriculture. And so in 2004, they, they developed and started to use this OPAV tool. And the goal of an OPAV is to keep conserved farmland in the ownership of farmers. It's pretty simple. And the way that it works is that if the land transfers hands, the farmland, the land trust retains the right to purchase it back at agricultural value. So it's similar to a right-of-first refusal. The only way that the OPAV is triggered is that if the farm is sold to a non-farmer. So typically, what happens with a land, a piece of land that has an OPAV on it is that the farm is inherited to the next generation of farmers or sold to another farmer, and the land trust doesn't need to be involved. They only get involved if the land is sold to a non-farmer. They retain the right to buy it back to keep the value at add value. So I'm going to give an example of how this works. So the Brad Farm in Vermont is a 40-acre, 48-acre farm. The fair market value, 76,000. So is the land valued with a traditional conservation easement? So the development premium removed, the type of conservation easements we do up here, would be 379,000. So the land value with the conservation easement and the OPAV, so that extra option, brings the value down to 165,000. So in this case, the Vermont Land Trust actually purchased the farm at fair market value, put a conservation easement and an OPAV on it, and sold it to a younger farmer for 165,000, which I would consider as pretty affordable. So just to talk a little bit more about the OPAV. And OPAVs are described quite well in this publication, so if you're interested in learning more. So the OPAVs are used widely in Vermont now. 37% of the conserved farms in Vermont have OPAVs. And this tool is being replicated in other states. It has other names, depending on state laws. And some conservancies prefer to just call it a right-of-first refusal. An OPAV is now compatible with the AL program, which is our, the land preservation program, the funds that we use that come from the federal government. And what makes the OPAV potentially tricky is that, as you might see, the additional value that you're taking out of the land, if you're paying a farmer for a conservation easement and an OPAV, that's how you're doing it, you have to pay the farmer a lot more. So the big question is, where does this extra money come from? Right now, when we do a conservation easement using the AL program, 50% of the dollars come from the federal government. 25% comes from the land trust, and the final 25% is donated by the farmer. But if you dramatically increase the, the price that you're going to pay to the farmer, you know, where is that money going to come from? We have a couple farmers on our farmland committee at the Leland County Conservancy that wonder if some farmers might be willing to put an OPAV on their land when they do a conservation easement voluntarily, without the extra cost. So there are a lot of questions about it. Even though that, sort of, there's like sticker shop on that, those numbers, in terms of funding. We think there are creative ways to think about how we might use this. The Vermont Land Trust has a lot of support from their state. The Vermont State and Housing Conservation Board provides that extra funding. So, and we don't have that in Michigan. So just wanted to add that to that, hopefully not too confusing description of OPAV. Okay, so the next tool is a ground lease or a long-term lease. And the way this model works is that the land trust actually owns the land, and the farmer owns the building and pays the taxes. So the idea is that the farmer can build equity in the infrastructure and have the security of a long-term lease without having the high price of the land. An example of this is Red Fire Farm in Massachusetts. There was a successful CSA, two farming partners who owned the Red Fire Farm. And they were burdened by debt, and they went to their local land trust and said, "Would you try this out with us? Would you give us a 99-year ground lease?" And Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust launched a campaign for Whole Farm Affordability, they called it. And they raised $400,000, 437 gifts, and 30, they had a 30% increase in their membership in 18 months. And they were indeed able to buy the farm, but the farmers retained ownership of the buildings. I put those last numbers on there specifically for presenting it to our board of directors to say, "We could reach a whole different group of people if we were to do a project like this." We probably wouldn't do a lot of projects like this. Our, the land conservancies, we don't want to own a lot more land. We're more interested in other tools. But this is a unique tool that might be useful in some circumstances and can bring support from a whole different part of the community than who we typically reach. So the last tool is the Food Shed Conservation Plan. And I already spoke about this when I mentioned the three reports that I looked at. Again, this tool asks how much and what types of farmland do we have? It gives a cost estimate for preservation, and it's a great fundraising tool, and it facilitates collaboration. And I think it would be worth considering doing one for our area. So I looked into these tools and talked with a lot of farmers. And then, as luck would have it, there was a workshop in Providence, Rhode Island, this past September. It was hosted by Equity Trust and the National Young Farmers Coalition. And they brought the land trusts who are doing the most innovative work in this field all together to talk about this. And so that was when all these ideas kind of gelled for me. I was really grateful to be able to attend that workshop. You can see there's a lot of different organizations from different parts of the country represented. And at this workshop, we discussed the OPAV and the ground lease models in depth. We talked about getting accraisals, choosing qualified farmers, helping farmers build equity, amending a lease versus amending an easement, finding funding sources. How do you monitor, how do you enforce? So this, I put this in here just to give you a sense that these are all really complex tools, but there are land trusts doing them already, and there are a lot of great people out there. There's a whole community to help support us if we decide to move forward with some of these things. So to sum things up, the elements of a successful land access program, according to what we looked into, are strong relationships with the farming community. That's number one. And we are so fortunate to have that up here. We have such a great network. I mean, this is a perfect example of it. Collaborative partnerships, multiple sources of funding, farmer-landowner matching programs. That, matching programs, there was a reason why I put that one first on the list, because I felt like that kind of was the foundation of every successful program. The Vermont Land Trust also has a matching program. That seems to be a key component. And then dedicated staff and committed organizations. Again, that was a little, a special note to our board that we commit to this. So now you might be wondering, where is, where does the funding come from for these programs? And I got Tom Nelson at the Conservancy kept asking this question. "Where does the funding come from? Can you break it down? Can you show me a pie chart? Can you do something?" And it was just too hard. Every, every organization was so different, depending on the state they were in, depending on their local government, depending on their, what other regional organizations and foundations were there. So I couldn't give Tom, or I can't give you a really good answer, except that it's a combination, just like it's a collaboration of groups that makes these things happen. It's a combination of funding. The strongest programs generally have the greatest diversity of funding. So it's not anything different than what we're already doing, except maybe we could work a little higher on the state level in Michigan. And then again, just to reiterate how important it is to have the partnerships. And that's why I'm grateful to be here today, talking with all of you about this, so that we can continue the conversation, because this is ongoing work. So our next steps are to report back to Rotary Charities. And we have our, our grants report written, and we're working on finalizing that. And then we hope to create a Farmer Access to Land Innovative Tools Document so that we can take it out to more farmers and to the ag community a little bit broader. And hear from you, from more farmers in more counties, which of these tools might work for you? Which are you interested in? How could we change them? How could they be more applicable to our region? So to, to finish up, I want to tell one last story. Nikki Rothwell held a farmer discussion group for us last spring. And one of the farmers who attended was Aaron Spinniken, who's a, he does cherry farming, and he has, he has some row crops. And he's part of a bigger family group of farmers. He's probably in his late twenties or early thirties. And he's a pretty soft-spoken guy, but when he did speak, he was very articulate. And when I asked everyone in the group this question, I said, "Where do you see yourself in 20 years?" He said, "Well, I hope to be doing what I'm doing now, and maybe, if I'm lucky, my kids." And that, to me, speaks about, just speaks to the whole issue. That's why we're here, that's why this is important. And it's, when I told this story to our board, then you understand that land preservation isn't just about the land. It's about the people who are on the land, and you already get that. And that's why this work is so important. So, thank you, and I welcome your questions, let's eat back.
Wow. Dang, yeah. I'm starting to feel these study sessions are really like university-level academic reports for us. It's really amazing, thanks for that. And Zane's been talking to us about this for a long time, but to see it all in one package is really impressive. And it hopefully gave everybody a sense of pride for what's going on in our region, right? It's, I know, I saw a lot of pens jotting down, so I'll just throw it out for questions. And Zane, I'll ask you, can you just move to the center of the room? I want this to be more of a conversation than like everybody pointing at you. Sit right in the middle there, if you would. And I think we have. As Zane moves in there. As Zane moves in there, I just want to point our attention to the folks online. We do have Rick Gleason still with us. Larry Dyer from up north just joined us. And Sharon May for May Farm joined us as well. So I've turned up their mics, and I'll translate some questions from them to, to the group. And I'll just ask everybody to speak up as loudly as you can, so these guys on the computer and the phone can hear you. And otherwise, time to drill Zane on questions here. Go ahead, Scott.
You're sitting in the chief justice chair now. I'm not a person with any of the expertise. This was really quite wonderful. I, I, it is so amazing, you, Ryan, and the others who gathered some incredible models and examples. How, what a great way to jumpstart, what are those options, what are the possibilities, and so on. I just was really taken. I, I'm, I, I do plagiarizing all the time, and I think this is a great example of following and hearing from all the country, strategies and examples and public. Thank you so much. This is a resource for all of us to think about, where do we all come from here? Yeah.
Scott.
To follow up on the farmland. Interested in establishing something like that here. I know you sort of put us off to go read the report. But can you, can you do a little bit of the highlights of what that report on, looking at those groups did find in other places? And how do you see, based on sort of your understanding, the prospects for a successful farmland investment group in, in this area?
Yeah, that report really asked a really critical question, which is, is it in the interest of farmers to have the actual owners of the land not live on it and potentially not even in this area? So you can imagine if you have investors from all over the country investing in Leland County farmland, and then you have young farmers renting the land from the investment group. I think it's a potential work. I mean, I think you probably tense my hesitation. I, I, I wonder, you know, how would a young farmer feel? How would Reed Johnson feel to be renting land from a farmland investment group? They provided a really affordable rate and a lease-to-purchase option? Yeah, I don't think they'd do that yet. It might be a farmland investment group that has a lot of, you know, supportive donors and a lot of money. They could be poised to be in a position where they could buy up a land that's really, a piece of land that's really at risk for being converted into development. They could do that quickly, and they could hold it. Some of the questions that Chip had were, "How do we find the right farmers? How do we, what would the application process be? If we have bought, you know, if we have this group of investors and we've bought some parcels of land, how do we choose who gets to, to be the one to farm it?" And so there are a lot of complex questions that, you know, would take a lot of thought. And hopefully, they would come up with. And hopefully they would come up with a really strong committee of people to help that process. And these land trusts who are using some of the tools like the ground lease and, they are asking a lot of those same questions too. Because if we own land and then we want to do a 99-year lease to farmers, and it's really attractive and we have ten locations, how do we choose? So there is, you know, they're creating processes to be equitable. The workshop that I went to, there's a whole forum for asking those kinds of questions. So that's really great. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, I do. So are there examples of combinations of partnerships between those kind of investment groups and land trusts? And with some sort of easements or even sort of positive farming agreements on them that begin to protect those as farmland, but then maybe go to still choose a farmer, farmers are secure in the sense that they know that that land will continue to farm. Is it needed to afford something? Are there those kind of examples?
There aren't any examples yet that I know of. But that, yeah, that's, that's what Chip was interested in. That's why he thinks of the conservations on top of us, because he wants to do something like that. He wonders if building a conservation easement into the whole program, would, would that work? Do you have, you can also add on that, Brian, you might know more about.
Well, you know, Scott, we've seen more of that kind of activity in natural lands in our shop. And we've had major donors buy land and hold it, for example, either through a 10, 30-month exchange or simply because they wanted to help us out. They, in some instances, might donate a conservation easement themselves, take the tax benefits and then turn around and either sell the land as restricted land or create a, you know, preserve of or what have you. So we've been a lot of trouble translating that to the world of farmland, because it's just a different animal. And there's different people with different interests, et cetera. So we haven't really cracked that nut yet. And part of the challenge is that, I think, even a lot of these private investment groups are still taking advantage of public tools. So, you know, unfortunately, the state of Michigan is really woefully behind a lot of other states in offering many tools. So something like the Delaware model is really intriguing to me. And I know the fellow who devised that program, and it's a recently retired kind of ag entrepreneur. The tax movement, he was convinced it was going to work and he knew, he knew it was going to work. I couldn't believe it would work. I just kind of believed that young farmers were going to change, trade an interest rate for a permanent conservation easement on the land they were acquiring. And they have way more, the reason it says 10 and 10 each year for that program is because that was the maximum amount of money they had available. They have way more demand than they have resources. So I was so dead wrong. The person Mike was totally dead right. You know, that is the kind of thing that Tom and I are passionate about. Even in a private partner, or a public-private partnership, something, some sort of, you know, create a twist on the whole approach could be something that works. The one we keep really coming back to is, is what you're suggesting, of just sort of massaging the conservation buyer approach with the benefits of the tax deductions associated with easements and then, you know, hopefully helping to make more land available. Like that land tends to be at risk, what have you.
Hey, guys, can I just ask the folks online if they have a question? Because I, I don't, they're tuning in and I really appreciate them doing that. So I want to, you guys online, anybody have a question you'd like to ask of Zane?
I have one.
Sharon, go ahead and I'll translate for you. Speak up as best you can.
Yes, I will. I don't know, you're going to have to carton while I frame this, you know, on my feet. What I'm thinking of is how, in our case, we went directly to a landowner and kind of put together our own lease agreement with him. And the benefit to the landowner is that we were going to be adding some infrastructure on our end that was going to increase his land value. And the benefit for us is that even with those investments, it equaled a pretty low amount of lease, you know, as far as a payment to, for us. And the other, it's, the other benefit from the arrangement was really to our watershed, because we got meats verified. And that's a big priority in our township. So it was kind of a win-win-win. But I'm sure that what we did could be done better. And some templates that were also provided for those kind of direct partnerships was something I would be interested in learning about.
Do you have a question specifically about that?
Did they run into any kinds of, any kinds of things that had to do with those direct farmer-to-landowner partnerships? Without having to rely on, you know, did they run in any templates or anything? Or is there any thought about including something like that?
Um, it's Sharon.
Yes.
If I, if I'm understanding you correctly, Sharon, you're wondering about templates or ways, better ways for landowners and farmers to come up with agreements between themselves, not necessarily including a land trust. And I don't know if you've ever seen the Equity Trust website, but they have a whole series of templates for farmers who are renting or want to lease to own. And I would be happy to send you that link. It's a great resource.
Let's make sure that you share those links with me and I'll make sure they go out in the email with the minutes notes from the meeting and the link to the video. So we'll have all those links available. And some of, are they in your PowerPoint or in the PDF that you provided?
Well, the name Equity Trust is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if you've got the exact link, share them with me and I'll make sure they get out to the whole network. Great. Thanks for the question, Sharon. Rob had a question?
Yeah, just based on the last time we met and for the presentation, I came away with the importance, as you reemphasized today, of the really having a person coordinating those farmer-to- maybe new farmer relationships? And where does the funding come from? Was your board receptive of your plea at the end there?
Yeah.
Or are there other ways that folks in the region could help fund something like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the big question now is, like, if we were to create a farmer-landowner matching program, at what scale do we want to do that? Do we want to create a northern Michigan, like a six county region? And I think that's what, you know, discussions that Tom and I have had, they always go back to that. This really needs to be a regional effort. Even though it might seem simpler upfront to just do, you know, a lot of county for people who are a little less centric, it really would serve, you know, so many more people and it would be so much more successful. And we have the foundation, you know, of these wonderful networks. So I guess the big question is, where would that be housed? You know, where would it make the most sense? And we haven't.
Yeah, I think the next step really in that regard is, Zane is coming up with recommendations right now. And I suspect we're going to need to do a little bit more work to take a deeper dive into what we think might work here. And that an outcome of that is going to be some recommended action. And one of the nice things of this being a Rotary Planning Grant is that, you know, we have good reason to believe that they would, they would help us to do that additional work to create a program framework. Now, we've done, you know, that's a tremendous amount of work out of a planning grant from Rotary. They should be, you know, exceedingly pleased. So hopefully, we'll be able to find some more resources to get to that next step, so that we can then look at. I know our board is already, was starting with a commitment to, to continue to work with Ireland. That may ban, make something happen there in terms of a resident. In sort of how do you protect farming as well as protect farmland? Like we, you know, we will never have enough money to have, meet the demand for easements or put easements on every piece of property that we'd like to. So we have to have other tools in the toolkit. And when you look at the other land trusts that are doing that, they're, they're very similar to us. They're just, they're just farther ahead. And in most cases, have more state support for the issue of what's going to happen with agricultural resources. But we're working really hard to wake up our state leaders to the issue that we have a lot of land that we've been losing for 10 years. And we have an innovation that's way more friendly to ag owners. So we're working that move too, you know, trying to get more policy votes to. I know just yesterday, at his invite, Glenn was being with Larry and then talked about this issue. He ran a notice that he was going to be attempting for farmland protection. So, you know, there, hopefully we can take advantage of some of our, you know, leadership too and starting to get this up at the state level. Because I think what's still misunderstood at that level is that these are all economic development tools. You know, they're all, it's all about economic development. It's not that way yet. But slowly, they are, you know. And people like Mark know that you buy easement and the money's not going very far from the farm. It all just turns into more activity. So.
Folks, just pause. Folks online, I'm going to ask everybody, please, to mute your mic unless you're specifically going to ask a question. I can hear some feedback rolling through. And I know it's challenging to hear people in the room from your side of the microphone. So please mute your microphone. I think you can do it on screen or you can do it on your phone, one way or the other, unless you specifically have a question. Thanks, Mark. Go ahead.
Yeah, Zane, I wondered, because I've been involved or heard about, you know, one of these investment companies that purchases farmland and moves back to the farmer. These, some of these, I noticed are smaller tracts of land. I think the important factor to look at for younger beginning farmers is smaller tracts of land. So if you did 10, 20, 40 acre plots, is that something that you saw in your research here? Was there more of that type of properties available? Good owners of that?
I, I don't have a really good specific answer to your question. But I, I think that is a limitation of them. Is that I think there, the investment groups are tending to look at larger.
Yeah, the ones I've seen, they're talking thousand or 5,000 acres or get some farmers together and do this.
Well, I do think the Iroquois Valley farms is a little bit, you know, it's not the 10 acres, but maybe 100 acres. And, and especially because those are, they specifically invest in organic farms, which tend to be smaller, not always. But yeah, I think that's a really, a really good question, especially for northern Michigan.
Right, for us, that would be pretty important.
One, and one trend you can definitely see, if you've been doing this work as long as I have, is that those people that tend to be further down the road are the ones where farmland's been more threatened longer. And a lot of times, there's, there's a relationship between the size of farms just from, like, especially the East Coast. You know, an average-sized farm in Delaware is, Lord knows how little or big. I mean, it's one or the other, right? It's maybe 40 billion chickens or it's a farm. And, you know, this, I think it's the same in a lot of those sort of New England area. And now there's something called New England Farm Finder that collected all of the matching programs from all the states and put them together into one website. So, and when I've looked on there, the farms tend to be smaller, most of them. They'll still have, you know, a dairy operation or something that's bigger, but they're more specialty farms.
Just because they have another large state.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, exactly. There's more development pressure. They tend to be urban edge farms, therefore they tend to be smaller.
Yeah, and the land trusts that are more advanced in this are those that serve areas where the development pressure is so, so high, they have to be aggressive. But I would also argue that, because I, I definitely been ready to, you know, go and do something, not just keep talking about it. And, you know, Tom just goes, well, hold on, you know, if it was easy, somebody would be doing it by now. I'm like, well, you gotta, you gotta come into it, you know? We have to make this a priority. That's the only thing that's going to happen. And so, of course, it's important to bring everyone together, stay on page.
Diane has a question, I know.
Yeah, question and a couple of thoughts. I was wondering if you have looked into the possibility of utilizing the new crowdfunding investment possibilities? I'm not sure what the right.
The MILE Act?
Yeah, that, in Michigan, because we now have that possibility in Michigan. And I'm interested in that, because that would, there is, you know, a movement in our community of people who want to do local investing, including among people who may not be super wealthy. But they like, but they do, they're arguing to still have some retirement funding and that's how they'd like to put that. And if they can pool their funds into something like that, and then maybe just like with Orianna Co-op, you got, you know, a share at the end of the year. I mean, if you're, you're investing by buying their co-op, you know, they're giving prorated monetary return in whatever scheme is set up. And also, I'm just really feeling like, you know, that we've got a big CSA movement here. We've talked about the importance of relationship and local marketing. And so there might even be, you know, part of your return could be knowing that you're going to be getting some, some food from these farms and cultivate those relationships. So I like those kinds of ideas. And just wondered if, if I've been thinking about that, that state investment opportunity that we have in Michigan that not many other states even have right now, is number one. And number two is, and this may just be in the subtext, but I experienced this in Ohio when my mom died, at her farm, which wasn't an active farm, but it was farmland that I wanted to get preserved. And there wasn't any match making program. So I think that match making program of young farmer to, to experienced farmer and young farmer to people who have land, that I tried for four years to try to find someone. And people in the Ohio Land Conservancy movement were also struggling with this and realized they didn't have a way to take something like that and hold it for somebody once they would come along. So just thinking about it in terms of the landowner perspective too, that there can be hearts of people who really want to try to do something, maybe that match making service.
Yeah, those are great comments. I hadn't thought of crowdfunding, but I really love that idea. It makes a lot of sense. You know, sometimes you get wrapped up in your little nonprofit world and you forget to think outside the box. I appreciate that.
Well, and it's specifically, and you may know how to describe it better than I do, but it's, it's that investment. It's what Michael Schumann, when he came here just years ago, talked about. So that now you don't have to be, you know, a million dollar investor. You can be a much smaller investor, doesn't have to go through the Securities Exchange Commission, you know, and things like that.
That may be the, whether there's a lot of program related investments from human foundations or charities or land conservancies who have endowed, make investments. I mean, there's some scope there for some kind of investment group for organizations that are interested in that, to invest some of their assets in that group as a way of helping supporting that and also getting a return for their own.
Scott, that's really critical. That's this idea of PRIs. And Scott will tell you this, but foundations by law must give away 5% of their investment each year as grants. But there's 95% of their corpus, which is their investment portfolio. And what's happening is a lot of foundations are running into really an ethical dilemma, realizing that they've got 5% of their money that they can give away to the programs they're most interested in, but 95% is invested in things like Coca-Cola. And so that challenge is being met. And PRI laws have been in the IRS since 1969. So it's not new, but it's just new on the radar of foundations. And I just attended a class, a three-day class in Detroit, all about this. And I think really, that's the answer. And I, I, I think it's the answer for, for this very thing, because it allows that 95% of investment dollars sitting in foundations to be used for mission-sensitive things. And by law, PRI money has to be used. And by law, PRI money has to be used at under market value. That's the law. It has to be used under or to market value. So if the market value of a, of an ag loan is 6%, PRI has to be 6% or below. And typically, foundations are saying 3%, 4%. Some of them are saying, you know, hey, how about a 0% loan or, or, or a recoupable grant? If the farm actually ends up making money, then they pay it back. So there's all sorts of things working with this PRI and I think those are part of the answers. I know Dan has a question here, so we'll turn it to Dan.
I did discuss some really interesting things geared towards, you know, helping new farmers financially. But is there, are there any programs that are kind of geared towards recruiting these Greenstone farmers? Or is that not an issue? You know, there are plenty of farmers in mind that are interested in doing this.
Um, I might not be the best person to ask, answer your question. Wendy might be a better person to answer it.
Ha, wait.
There is an increasing amount of serious interest. I, I can assure you that in this area of people that are, you know, for lack of a better term, the wannabes and new to farming farmers, some of them have the financial wherewithal to, to do that kind of as their on-court career. Many of them do not. But I, I'm encouraged by the interest. But, but what I think, and Bill just mentioned it in his comment here, is I, I worry about the, the investment model because, you know, depending on that's, how that's communicated to potential investors, what is the expectation on return on investment? Because I can assure you that the smaller niche, new to farming farmers, you know, maybe with the exception of, of some of the more high-value crops that they might be planting, like wine grapes or, or hops, those, those margins are pretty, pretty slim or nonexistent. So if your investor group, you know, classically, individually, people of means and wealth, invested in farmland, and this has been going on for years, with the express purpose, you know, maybe not the express purpose, but the real purpose of having a tax write-off, you know? So because the farm over the long haul maybe was going to be in a breaking position. So I, I guess, you know, I'm thrilled about the interest, but I also think that clearly communicating to the investment pool, what, you know, of this type of farmer that is going to be interested in these programs, beginning from a ranch or whatever, what, what do their, their business models really look like, five and 10 and 15-year salary, you know? So what kind of return on investment are these people realistically expecting?
So I have a thought to interject there if we can.
Larry, go ahead, Larry.
This actually jumped out when, when Zane, when you're talking, you, you mentioned Chip Hogland's comment being the potential investor, but, you know, how do I find the right farmer? And I wonder if we could package some of the educational programming we do, including the residency at Maple Bay, but all the other things that we do in a way that would provide a portfolio for the, for the farmers to give some assurance to the investors that they have some of the wherewithal to be successful at what they're doing. And especially thinking about that now as Brian and I are looking at, you know, resubmitting the beginning farmer rancher grant. And I'm wondering if something like that might be an element of it.
Yeah, I was going to mention that to you again, too. Island, are you familiar with Island? It's an organization up here and they have a whole Get Farming, Keep Farming, great series of educational workshops. And what Larry is referring to is a farmer residency program is on a property actually owned by the Grand Chivers Regional Land Conservancy. It's like a farm incubator project where farmers can, from low, you know, rental price can rent for, it's a year at a time.
Three, three years, initial, three years.
Three years, okay.
Grow whatever they want?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the idea is to, to provide, this is another growing trend around the country, hopefully, Zane's gonna add as a little tagline to the program. That we're seeing more and more people grow these residency or incubator programs, which are providing young growers a place to share equipment, get assistance, test a business model. So they may, maybe graduate from MSU or work at the Student Organic Farm graduate. And then, as Wendy sees us all the time, then they come to Wendy with some crap. They can't go anywhere, do anything. So they need a place to go and be able to build a resume, frankly, and develop a business plan and figure out what part, you know, of the market they want plenty in, what have you. And so we see that as a growing need and we're working with Island right now. Maybe that happened on one of our properties. The hope being that we, we're seeing this in our own country, that these places are then spinning out that grower that is ready to go to Greenstone or is ready to go to FSA and, and get a loan. Where, you know, three or five years earlier, whatever, they, they weren't.
You know, that kind of sounds like some urban farming models I've worked with in Chicago.
Yeah, I'm sure they're probably very similar.
Yeah.
And maybe they're spinning into a, you know, farm to the restaurant operation or a CSA operation or whatever, and also community outreach organizations as well, CSAs.
So one of the, one of the keys of that program, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, is that in order to qualify for an FSA, you know, you have to actively manage the farm, not just work on the farm.
Oh.
And been responsible for the management decisions on that farm. So coming out of that student organic program, you probably don't have that. And so a residency program where they are responsible for that will allow them to qualify for those FSA loans.
Yeah, and that, that was, I mean, they've, they've relaxed that rule somewhat. They allow other kinds of life experience. It doesn't always have to be farming, but still, if you're just coming out of, if you just finished an undergraduate and maybe done the Student Organic Farming Program at, at MSU, you still wouldn't have what most investors would, or what the FSA would consider the appropriate life experience. So yeah, that's, that was part of the idea, is to give people that track record.
So we've got about five minutes or so left, Q and A. Are there more specific questions for Zane on this? Rick, you haven't asked any, or you, you have any specific questions for Zane on this program?
Not a specific question, just an observation. For those of you who are familiar with our organization, everything we do revolves around policy that's been developed by our members from the grassroots. And I've been taking a look at our policy with respect to land conservation, transitions, young farmer programs, and, and I believe there's room for more accurate and specific terms within Michigan Farm Bureau policies that relates to these issues. So that's something that I can present to, to our younger members when we get involved in, in the policy development process and see if we can fine-tune some of these vague terms that we have with respect to funding.
Great.
That would be great. And, and let me know, let, let Tom know, I mean, use me as a conduit. If there's anything we can do to help by preventing, presenting to county farm bureaus, what have you. We've been trying to get down to Mark's group to talk about different things and, you know, I, while Dean was still at the chair, I was, I was fairly regularly at, at grand chair, was Lila Na. So we just really need to get back there and let them, make sure we keep the membership up to speed about the kinds of issues we're seeing, because I bet there's a lot of dovetail. We're not getting it into the policy manual necessarily.
That's a great idea. And we've, we've heard that a few different times now, that this organization should try and play a greater role in Farm Bureau, especially in terms of the policy piece. And Mark has said that and a few other people have said that. So thanks for reiterating it, especially with this. So one of the things we try to do with these study sessions is listen, but also imagine what can we do as a group specifically about this? And it sounds like, you know, Brian, you're kind of engaged in this, the conservancies are engaged in this. Is there anything else we as the Food and Farming Network should be thinking about in terms of our role in accelerating this, this idea you have?
Well, one thing I would ask that Larry and I have not sat down yet, but I know last year when Island submitted their Beginning Farmer Rancher Grant, renamed the Food and Farming Network as an active partner. And I think that's really important because it shows such a broad constituency of people who are supportive of, you know, advancing beginning farmer rancher issues. So, you know, it would just be nice to have a nod that folks are okay with that. And then I'm guessing that at some point, Zane will convene our little advisory group again. And in the meantime, Tom and I and others will probably be having some chats about what's, what is the next step, you know, mean, and, and we'll make sure and keep you all informed and let you know if there's anything else. You think of anything else, Zane?
I, I mean, I'd like to talk with some people individually about specific things that you've said today or, you know, specific areas, especially if we move forward to, you know, our specific recommendations that we're going to make. So I appreciate everyone being here and, um, good questions and, yeah.
And just so you know, Zane crafted two of the narratives that will be in our report that will come out on March 13th. So this project is mentioned in there, so it is appearing as part of the work of the Food and Farming Network. So anything else? Oh, Diane, go ahead.
Well, one quick, you mentioned, should it be like a six county area and we really have people come? And, yeah, I mean, that's a little Traverse Conservancy, have you, it seems like that might be another national partner. Because I think there is interest in, among people around the table here, of having a, the 10-county township, not just a six-county township.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I know the Wallon Conservancy is probably where we are on less, you know, 2001 on this issue, but, you know, five, 10 years from now, and certainly getting involved in that is, knowing what else is going on. I mean, there's, there's interest among some of us, quite the majority, to do some of this work. So in that little ownership, there's interest and then looking at people closer to Traverse, so I'd be interested.
Yeah.
So with that, I'd, I'd like to wrap it up and thank Zane again for the great work you've done and the presentation today. And Zane has provided her PowerPoint presentation as a PDF document that I will share with the group as well as a recording of this presentation today that we'll share online. But I want to thank Zane Dunn for your hard work. Really appreciate it. And encourage everybody to tune in for the summit. Looks like we're going to have a fun time. We're watching, we're gonna see a movie. We're gonna do our rapid-fire reports, so it'll be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., 3:00 to 5:30 p.m., something like that. Rapid-fire reports we normally do. The presentation of our top-secret award we usually give every year. So be sure to attend for that. And we'll have some cocktail hours between the session and the movie. That's all at the Inside Out Gallery here in downtown Traverse City in the warehouse district. It's 3:00 p.m. on March 13th. So thanks, everybody, and thank you, everybody, for tuning in online. I really appreciate you trusting us to make that happen and appreciate you being there. Thanks, everybody.